Well, good evening. This is Eric Moore and this is the August 27th meeting of the Town Meeting Study Committee. We're conquered. I'm just gonna turn my camera. There we go. Great. So, thank you everyone for joining. We may have a few stragglers in as well. I'll begin with taking role and also we need a clerk for tonight. Who can clerk tonight? Keith, could I ask you to clerk? Would it be okay?
Sure.
Thank you. Oh, sorry. We are recording and I'll get you a transcript of the meeting as well after the fact. Uh, thank you. Uh, I'll go through. Keith has just stepped away, I guess. So, but I'll go through with role and come back. Where, Kristen Hagerty, I see you.
Present.
Thank you. Alice Kaufman, I know that you are on mute tonight, but I do see you online. Thank you. Eric Moore, present. Parashar Patel, I see you.
Yep, present.
Thank you. Eric Van Luna, I see you as well.
Present.
Uh, thank you. Looping back to Keith Bergman. Uh, well, we heard Keith, so I know he's present.
Present.
Uh, and Katie, uh, as well as just joined. Katie? Uh, she was there. Uh, we're expecting her in a few minutes, so we'll loop back to Katie. Uh, so I'll move ahead to-
Did you get Phil?
Uh, I always forget Phil. I never call him Phil. Phil?
Let's put his name at the top of the list.
Yeah, 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 yeah. A Phil, something like that. Uh, so we've gone through. Welcome, Cameron McKenna, uh, our liaison from the Select Board to our meeting this evening. Welcome, Cameron. And Katie-
Happy to be, I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not gonna be able to be here for the entire meeting, but I'm just really glad that I'm able to join and, and sort of just be part of the, part of the effort here. So, thank you.
Great, super good. Thank you. And Katie, I see that you've joined as well. Just acknowledge your presence when you can, please. Uh, so again, uh, Keith Bergman will clerk tonight and moving into the agenda. Uh, we'll begin with public comment. I see a few members of the public online. Uh, does anybody from the public have any comments tonight? The normal two minutes. Okay, moving on. We'll have other, other opportunities to comment later on as well as, later on as well. So Chair's comments, I, I think my focus to, with their comments tonight, uh, is really checking in. You know, we're at the end of the summer. We've been going for about three months. You know, I, I sort of see us at the end of a, a phase of work. Uh, but I just would like to check in. We had this conversation in the previous, oh, you know, we forgot minutes. We'll come back to minutes. We had this conversation in the previous, previous meeting as well. Just how are we doing? Are we making the progress that we feel we need to be making? Uh, I, I see a shift, uh, in, in our work to focus, move, moving away from sort of, moving past framing. You know, trying to understand what's really going on, what, what town meeting is about. Uh, understanding, you know, the, the historical context of town meeting as well, and to getting into looking at solutions. So I see a phase change for us as well in terms of, um, uh, you know, the way that we're gonna be working this, this fall. Uh, but, uh, I'd like to check in with the folks on this call, uh, and see if we have any feedback or concerns or suggestions at this point for how we're doing. I'll say that, uh, uh, you know, we're back to meeting as a whole committee. Uh, I think, you know, some folks have challenges meeting during the day. Uh, Parashar, actually never, never actually heard from you about your availability during the day. So when you can, please get back to me via email. Uh, and, but in the balance, it seems as a Tuesday evening is, is, is okay for everyone. I realize that in certain cases, there are some accommodations that need to be made. But let me ask the question, how are we doing? Uh, any, again, any concerns or, or, or things that we need to sort of think about as we go forward?
So Eric, I'll chime in.
Yeah, thank you.
Forgive me, because August has been a little, when the work was, but do we have one slide that lays out the specific objectives that we are aiming towards? Because I think, I want to make sure that we're aligned on the objectives. Is that then, I think, will inform the solutions? So I know we've debated and discussed wording domains and all that, but I think it would be really helpful if we had a slide, maybe two, on what our objectives are.
So, um, I'm not sure what you mean by objectives. I think, you know, we talked about, you know, what we want to do for town meeting, uh, how we interpreted our mission. Uh, I think, you know, that was something that was really focused on, on the work of town meeting, I think. Uh, um, uh, you know, I, I, my thinking is, is, I think evolved as well to say that town meeting is a piece of a legislative process that, uh, um, you know, town meeting is a culmination of a legislative process in town. Uh, and so things that happen upstream in committee have a big impact in what we do or don't do at town meeting. So I think that it's, it's reasonable to look at some of that scope. You know, there's this in terms of the phases of what we're doing, uh, identifying, my view, identifying, uh, you know, sort of our outcomes. Um, and the study areas, it goes back to sort of organizing the areas of stuff. But I, I don't know if those things qualify as objectives for you. Uh, and is that, that clear enough for you or is it something else?
No, no, I think that's clear. So basically, is the goal then to, in essence, judge the solutions to how well they enable us to meet our mission as we've laid out here? Would that be a fair statement?
Yeah, I think so. I, I think, you know, we've been identifying problem areas, what I'll, what I'll say issues are, and trying to do that in a relatively systematic way. Where, you know, we've identified and we're identifying candidate solutions that can address those issues uh, to some degree. Um, I see our work this fall of identifying what, what solutions have the most potential uh, and focusing more on those. And, you know, with that, we have some expectations around what we do address in terms of what was given to us at town meeting as well. Uh, I mean, you know, our objectives are really the charter, right? Uh, and so, you know, in a way, you know, one objective is to report out, uh, to, to, in an interim form to the Select Board in December, and then the other objective is to report out to the town with what our recommendations are. But I see the work is basically, I see the work is basically analyzing the problem, posing solutions and evaluating solutions and making recommendations both near term and long term, what could make town meeting better per inclusive, effective and responsive. Does that cover you, Parashar? Are there other folks that want to talk? So when I give a little-
That answers it. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Um, Eric Van Luna, see your hand up, please?
Uh, yes, well, I, I know we've got the, uh, the, the high level uh, objectives of being town meeting more inclusive and effective and responsive. I think of this, just my personal take, as, um, a more uh, pragmatic, what do we need to be doing, uh, in the short and middle term? Because I, my, my feeling is that, um, by December, uh, we need to, at a, at an absolute minimum, um, be be responsive and reporting to the Select Board on the three warrant articles that, you know, that came up, the clickers in the the remote and, uh, in the Australian ballot, and we'll call it afterwards. Um, and that, uh, I'd like to see us really focused in the September, October, November timeframe and, uh, would suggest even a radical idea, and that is that, uh, for essentially something like six weeks from now, the first, first half of October, um, we, we figure out timing relatively soon and we announce a hearing for, uh, the first half of October. Um, and then we invite the, uh, the proponents of those three warrant articles, uh, to come and speak. Uh, we, we, uh, we obviously advertise this, this, uh, meeting widely and try to, uh, gin up people who
Yeah.
would be on the con for, for those three. And that we think of it in terms of that being, uh, the, the way you lined it out in the, in the, uh, your, your slides for discussion tonight, Eric, it, it, it was more like September is, um, or October is gonna be the survey, you know, open on October 1 and end, uh, November 1. And-
So, so Eric, I hear you.
We have a, have a, a hearing as well in that period and that we be sure to address those three items.
Good. Uh, we're on the same page. Uh, I mean, it may not be that this particular graphic is not, not, not clear, but we're pretty much on the same page. And so as we get more into the discussion around what I see us doing in September through December, uh, we're gonna have a big, a nice, big, happy intersect there. Uh, so we'll, we'll come back to you for, for some more comment later then. Um, Katie Bresnik, I see you, please?
I actually think, um, Phil might have had his hand up first.
Uh, sorry, Phil. Um, I no longer see Phil's hand up though, so-
Oh, well, I, I did want to just say something briefly, and that is to follow on what Eric is saying. I think we have to be more concrete in what our end products are. Like, uh, as I hear you describing it, it's two reports. It's an interim report in December to the Select Board and a final report to the town in May. So I think we have that down. It's sort of like the two main end work products are these reports. And then from there, you can step back and see what goes into the reports. But I, I really think we need now to start focusing on concrete, uh, end work products.
Uh, okay, good. I'll, I'll say that where we differ is that the work product is really gonna be a set of recommendations, which will be delivered through one or more presentations, will be delivered through one or more reports. Um, so, so I think, um, but, but I think I agree with you. Katie, please?
Yeah, I think I was, I really was just going to echo Eric and now Phil's points that I think having um, lay out, laying out what we need to accomplish in terms of like concrete items that we need to check boxes for to get to the, uh, report out to the Select Board and to our final report would be very helpful uh, in figuring out, you know, the pieces we need to do to get there. Um, I think that allows us to be more productive.
Okay, good. Thank you. Keith Bergman, please?
Um, I do think that it would be important to move ahead with some sort of, uh, uh, public uh, hearing, public input, uh, process, uh, but I think it should be structured around our mission, which is town meeting. A secondary mission is to review some specific proposals that were referred to us. But we were created to, as the, as the Town Meeting Study Committee. Uh, and I think that's our focus. There are specific proposals that have come up. Those should not be uh, the sole, uh, subject of any public hearing that we do. Uh, but I do think that it would be important for us to move to, to a phase where we're allowing for, um, for public input about, uh, how to improve generally public hearing, where we may well hear some comments specifically about, uh, one or more of the three proposals uh, that have been given to us. But we are, we are not the three proposal committee. We're the town meeting committee.
Got it. You know, I hear tacit, uh, you know, that you're thinking one hearing. Uh, I'm open to more than one hearing. I, I think we would be well served by more than one. Uh, but, um, Kristen Hagerty, please?
Um, so in terms of how are we doing? I, I've been really impressed by, um, the willingness of committee members to really dig into the data so that we can answer questions of, uh, our, our fellow residents about, you know, what we've looked into and, and things like that. So I feel like we're, we're very prepared in that respect, and I know that we're moving close to kind of a final survey and we have plans for that. And so I think that the next big piece in terms of how we could even do better is engage more with the members of this committee. So like today, it's great to hear more voices. So we have that discussion, um, and, and get the different ideas. So I'm looking forward to that. And um, as everybody pointed out, the public hearings are gonna be really exciting. We don't have a lot of folks on our regular calls. Um, so it will be great to, you know, personally invite everybody so they put it on their calendar. And to Eric Van Luna's point, let's really, let's get the dates on the calendar as soon as we can, because there's some logistics to making sure we can do that and then get the word out. So that, those two things will be really exciting in terms of the next steps.
Good, good. Katie, I see your hand.
Yeah, just a question. I have never been to a public hearing and I don't really know what that looks like if, and I don't know if someone could give me kind of a overview of what, like what we need to prepare. Do we like ask questions or we just leave it open to public feedback?
I have the same question as well. I think in terms of structuring, uh, hearing, that does involve at least two of the items. You know, we have a question around, is it set up as a pro con? Is, does somebody from the committee take the lead in sort of presenting the case? I, I don't, I don't, I'd like to talk about how to organize a hearing. Perhaps we can do that in just a minute, uh, in the context of talking about the rest of the fall. Um, so yeah, so for the Select Board, right, things that I think-
Excuse me, Alice had her hand up. I don't know if she was gonna respond to that about that hearing.
Alice, sorry, I see you now.
And I know I said that I wasn't going to participate. I'm only partially here tonight because I had surgery today and I'm not at my top form. But there isn't, to me, there's a difference between public hearing and public for, a public meeting. I think what we're talking about is a public dialogue, a public hearing in a public place that many people could come to to give us their ideas. I don't think we're looking for a decision-based um, answer here. We're looking for feedback on where we're heading, what we're thinking about. Are there things that we're missing? And what are your opinions about these items that we have on, that we are addressing? Um, and so I think of it as, we can have a panel. We've got the whole committee there. We could have, you know, I think yeah, the way we communicate is up to us to decide. It's not going to be just a one-time deal that we have one public meeting and think that we've met our objectives.
Good.
Lots to think about in doing that.
Good, thank you. So to run with that, it could be that we have a public forum, uh, that maybe has four topics in it, right? One topic over an hour and a half period, say, you know, four 20-minute topics, my math is right. Uh, the first topic could be about to- town meeting. The second topic could be about, you know, the, the clicker question, and folks will have a pro or con, you know, folks have things to say about clickers. Uh, would have opportunity to speak with that, uh, as well as the rest of the public. Uh, the third, the third could be, you know, the question of representative town meeting. The fourth could be the question of, uh, remote town meeting. Uh, that, that kind of structure is, is suggested from what you said, Alice. I don't know how we feel about that. Like to come back to it. Um, for the Select Board, right? I, I think you know, that we need to make a judgment about whether or not we would endorse clickers for town meeting 25. Uh, you know, there's whether or not, you know, in future meetings it makes sense, but I think in the near term, there's a question about whether or not we would recommend that in the near term or anything. Um, are there some changes to the warrant format in terms of what goes into, uh, what goes sort of on, on the page, so to speak, with the warrant? Uh, any suggestions around, uh, article scheduling? Where, you know, the, the sort of the dialogue between, uh, the Select Board and the moderator about, you know, sort of what goes on the consent calendar and what, 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 um, what, you know, might become sort of be, be designated as a high interest, a high interest article. Um, and, you know, any questions or any suggestions that we want to make around hearing and collateral timeline? All that stuff, you know, should be things that we have for the Select Board by, by December if we're gonna recommend anything. I don't know the answer. Um, you know, uh, I think, you know, another question's gonna be if we have an interest in joining or forming a coalition for a remote town meeting pilot. Um, I don't know the answer to that, but it's a thing that we should have an answer for when we talk to the Select Board in December, I think, because that could turn into a warrant article. Um, I think, and this is a, 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 a longer-term question as well as, is there a role for a, a town meeting or legislative uh, process committee, uh, beyond the lifetime of this committee? And, you know, a driver for that could be if we commit to, if the town commits to, uh, investing in the possibility of a remote, remote town meeting home rule. So just at a high level, um, this is the kind of stuff that I think we'd like to be able to go to the Select Board with by the time we get to December. And there may be more things, right? So that, that's what I have in mind. And in terms of kind of the, you know, an outline of a plan of work, um, we have, I'll say, kind of three streams of work. Um, one is the survey, uh, you know, where, um, we're working and putting that together in a final forum, uh, beginning to promote it. Uh, uh, and also prepping for doing data analysis for the survey in September. We're thinking, we're talking that we're gonna launch it September, uh, October 1. It'll be up for a month. Um, you know, the communication plan involves, uh, each of us, in effect, writing a letter to the bridge, uh, saying, hey, you know, check out the survey, and this is one aspect of town meeting, but maybe you didn't know about. Um, so we're working through that, but that's, that's part of, uh, our work in the latter half of September through October. In November, the survey closes, we have data analysis to do, uh, and reporting to do. Um, I believe that, uh, we should be doing some work, uh, towards surveying, uh, public administrators. There's people like us who volunteer on boards and committees. Uh, I, I don't want to get into deep, in depth in that, that discussion now, but I think that looking later into the fall, I think that, um, some work focusing on that, that constituency, I think is important for us. Um, on the inquiry and the inquiry work, you know, it's, uh, Keith, Keith and I have talked informally about uh, beginning to interview town staff and board members about their experiences with town meeting and, and processes. And, and I think in part of that is that any changes, many things that we might propose are gonna be carried out through people who are already on boards now. So, so that, that's a, a, a process. Uh, we have some data, uh, from the clerk, uh, that, uh, allows us to look at representation relative to what's in, um, the voter registration database, so to speak. Uh, and elect, uh, uh, election and, uh, town meeting participation. And so the data analysis is really focused on, uh, uh, is, is town meeting moral, is town meeting representative uh, of the overall voter population? I don't know. Uh, that work doesn't have to happen in September. It can be a chunk, uh, but it's something that we should, we would benefit by doing this fall. Uh, in October, my vision, I, I use the word hearing here. I think we're already beyond that in terms of thinking about it as in terms of some, some sort of a citizen forum. Uh, is to hold, uh, a public meeting, uh, on some of the things that are hard to make sense, some of the things that have real trade-offs in them. And, uh, you know, I think clickers is one of those things. Uh, remote town meeting is another one. Uh, uh, and, you know, I would be happy to hold a second forum in November if we can get people to come. Uh, and my belief is that by December, it would be good to hold a public administrators forum so that people from boards across, uh, people with board service or committee service, uh, uh, could come together and talk about, uh, the challenges they face, face, you know, relative to town meeting. Then in the recommendations work, it is that, uh, we begin, you know, earnest discussions around pros and cons, uh, in September. Um, that could begin as soon as our, our, I think our meeting on September 10th, I think we should use to organize, uh, one or more forums concretely. Uh, but I think, you know, as our meetings go into September and October, each of those meetings should have a real meaningful discussion around one of the solutions that we think is of high interest. Uh, and that, that work would continue through, through September and October. Uh, and into November, we'll begin a goal by the second half of November, by mid-November, having a pretty clear idea as to what we want to go to the Select Board with, but then uh, scheduling for, for time with the Select Board in December to make an interim report. So that's the outline of things. Uh, clearly, um, you know, what we talk about and what date for the meeting, uh, what date we have for one or more public forums. These are important details, but I don't have that here, but that's what I would like to work towards. Uh, Eric, I see you, please?
Uh, yeah, two small points. Um, one is, uh, it, it would be good to find out right away what are the two dates of the Select Board meetings in December, so that we can, you know, count backward from that and plan and obviously, uh, there's something called Christmas that comes, comes in that time also.
Yeah, every year I hear, yeah.
The, the second point is, I, I think it's confusing and a misnomer, uh, to describe, uh, the important thing that you're talking about doing as a public administrators forum. Uh, I think a public administrator is the town manager or, uh, Keith's kind of position before town administrators, things like that. And the volunteer citizens who do the back bone, bone to the, so much work, uh, committees, committee chairs and things like that, that we need to find a, a, a different phrase that would really alert them to that's who we, we want to hear from.
I hear you. I think that's been an unsuccessful piece of jargon. Are we talking about, you know, uh, uh, committee volunteers, board volunteers? Uh, I don't know, but, um, Parashar, please?
Yeah, excuse me. I echo what Eric says. I think we should further refine what we mean by that. And maybe take a look at the past couple warrants. You get a sense of the, you know, the 20% that'll get us to 80, because otherwise, you know, run into deadlines if we're trying to survey all administrators or many administrators. The only other note is December only has three weeks practically speaking this year. And so maybe think a little bit about, do we need a forum to get that input from committee chairs and board chairs or
Right.
some other way to get that input?
Yeah, I mean, we can move it into November, which also is three weeks, I suppose, but, but, uh, um, um, uh, fair enough. Good, thank you. Um, Katie, please?
Um, yeah, just a point that I made at, um, our experiences subcommittee is if we doing as we're, you know, finding for the general survey, doing an additional survey is a lot of work that I don't know that we have time for. So I echo Parrishar's point is like how we can get that information without, um, subs- a substantial effort to put a survey together.
Yeah, fair enough, fair enough. Um, uh, I had one more slide here. No. Right, okay. So board, okay, good, good. We covered that. Okay, so, um, in terms of the, the roadmap ahead, uh, we're a half hour past, so uh, let me pause to see if there's any public comment on this section before we move into the survey discussion. Uh, any public comment or questions, please? Uh, Carmen, please, I recognize you.
Um, I just checked the dates of, of Select Board meetings in December and they are December 2 and December 16.
So we're shooting for December 2nd to, to, uh, I would say to, to, um, uh, go, go to them, so to speak. Uh, and I'll communicate that to, uh, uh, Ca- well, Cameron's on, but I'll communicate that to Cameron. And, uh, I'll do that directly as well with, um, Mary Hardman.
Eric, I can make sure that's scheduled with the Select Board too.
Oh, right, yeah, yeah, please. Uh, on the second, and, uh, cool, thank you. Uh, moving forward, so the survey, uh, so where are we at with this, right? As we have a draft, I, I wrote something. Uh, Katie did a, a big revision of it, uh, and then a subsequent revision of that. So the latest survey, uh, is in the meeting attachment. Uh, the focus really is, is on, on questions that are obviously about town meeting. Uh, I think one question that I have is, you know, what's the right approach to get people to start the survey? I think we'll see in some of the communications collateral analysis together and in the survey introduction, um, that, you know, uh, I think a concern of mine is that you know, if one, one person in 10 or two people in 10 come to town meeting net, you know, are they gonna, is, is a broader group gonna do a survey on town meeting? Or, or is a survey, it's about our local democracy? Is that gonna get more people to start? Uh, second question is what's the right approach for getting people to finish our survey? And the previous meeting that we had, there was a real emphasis on parsimonia, keeping it short. And, you know, Phil, I, I recall your, your comment as well. The survey needs to be three questions, right? Um, so, so, um, so what's the right approach to, to getting people to finish? Uh, part of that is, 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 uh, you know, is our audience uh, gonna be people who don't come to town meeting at all or people who mostly come to town meeting? And then finally, I think, and this is where I'd like to open some discussion before actually getting into the survey, is are we asking enough? And I want to say, what is the one thing about our voters that you wish you understood better? Right? We have, you know, in effect, one big at bat with the survey to go to the public in a broad way to get information. We'll learn things from focus groups or, I mean, from a, a forum or other ways. But, you know, what's the one thing that you just don't know? And Eric, uh, I'm gonna put it to you, okay, to, to begin with, and that, that is, you have a ton of experience, right? You know what you know. Um, but are there questions that you have about where, where our voters are at in terms of their attitudes? Uh, or in terms of what you'd like to learn through the survey that would be important for your work here? Do you have any open questions?
Well, to be really, really candid, um,
Yes.
I'm, I'm not sure that our survey is gonna tell us a lot that's new.
Uh huh.
Um, I think that the, that sort of the, the fundamental dilemma is that, um, by whatever measure and, and, and one measure is, how many people vote for, uh, local elections?
Mm-hmm.
If, if there's no state or federal or, or anything else.
Right.
You know, it is a relatively small percentage. Um, and that's because a lot of people, for a lot of reasons, are, you know, are not interested, the same way that, you know, heresy. Some people don't follow hockey, you know, they just, they're not interested.
So, so-
And so, uh, uh, I, I guess I would- Maybe not put so much as much energy and focus on getting that perfect. Because I think that our biggest problem is going to be getting. People other than the usual suspects. To to participate. I mean, the people that are involved, that are committee chairs, that are active and all, they're gonna say, oh, great. And they're gonna us and and we'll get that, but I I am a bit skeptical. That we will learn a lot from people who are not involved at all in town government, but. Are they are they intrigued by and want to respond to this survey?
So at the risk of paraphrasing you incorrectly, Eric, I mean, what I hear you saying is, what is is, right? Some people, some people come and some people don't, and that's the way it is, and I I think you're you're wanna. Take that as a given, so to speak. I think, I think, I mean, I'm actually really curious about why people don't come, and so I think that. That clearly has been a driving question for me, so I think that's one area where we differ, but but again, without judgment. Anybody else that really would like to go around the table, so to speak, on this question? Because I want to make sure that we identify really what's driving our our information need through the survey. Keith, Burke, please.
Yeah, my my answer to the question of, you know, what's the one thing about the voters they. I wish to understand better, and if in one in one question, why do you or don't you attend town meeting? And that's. That's the the bottom line of the of the approach here. Because I agree with those who say that, you know, that for for those who don't attend town meeting, they'll probably continue to not. But in any, but thanks.
So that would be your one question. Good, thank you. Katie Bresnik, please.
I think the one question that's most impactful for me is understanding. The voters' interest in different recommendations we might have. Which I think will really inform what we end up recommending and whether, and as Kristen phrased it, is are you more likely to come if we do this? Or not, and I think that I'm hopeful at least that that would be impactful for our work.
So to put that slightly differently, it's gauging what might work for you, not you, but 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 you, the voter. What would help? What would help get people out? Good, thank you. Parashar, please.
I'm gonna, I think the one question to ask is, is town meeting still a good form of government for copper today?
That's an interesting question. That's a great forum question, I'll tell you that too. It's pretty open. Good, thank you. Alice Kaufman, it's to you, please.
Hi there. So I just want to congratulate the revision work on the survey because I think that that gets at a lot of really detailed questions in a very succinct way. The this question that gets at what prevents you from going, you have a grid to fill out with a checkbox or. Which makes it very simple for us to understand from the people who don't come, why they don't come, and I think that's an important question for us to ask. So thanks for whoever did that version of our survey.
That was Katie, yeah.
Incredibly helpful in understanding what we're trying to get at.
Good, thank you.
That's all my comments are.
Kristen Hegarty, please.
Katie said what I was interested in learning from the voters, which is, you know, are any of the proposed changes likely to affect your decision to attend? But but to Parrishar's point, you know, is town meeting still a good form of government? Today, and and kind of similar to what I guess Eric Van Loon was saying is, I do feel like. We're not gonna uncover anything new or different necessarily, just based on everything I read from the other towns, because one of the things they did explore was. You know, changing the form of town government. And everybody's like, no, 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 we're gonna keep it at town town meeting. However, I think one of the things that this committee is doing, although it feels like very long and drawn out at times, is. Trying to validate kind of some assumptions we make, so. Although, yeah, although I have an assumption about it, I I appreciate that we're still trying to not take it for granted.
I think I haven't seen your hands, so I'm just gonna call you. Please.
Who's that? Eric, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Phil, I wanted to get your take on your one question in the survey. The one thing you'd like to know, yeah.
So actually, I don't have a one question, but my comment is. The the idea that we're going to find out why people don't attend town meeting. Is it may not work because the people that don't attend the town meeting. Probably won't answer the survey. So what would what would would be great, I guess, if we could figure out a way. To get answers from those people who are not gonna fill out the survey.
Yeah, good, thank you.
Yeah, and maybe it could be, you know, a few people walking around town with clipboards and asking. Or waiting at the Crosby's Market or something and asking.
Good, thank you. Katie, I'll go to you, please.
Yeah, just just a quick comment. I think that's something we can put in our kind of advertisement for the survey is like whether or not you've attended town meeting. We still would love you to fill out the survey, so it explicitly invites people to participate and not just think it's not for them. Well, that helps maybe a little bit, but probably not perfect, obviously.
Yeah, I think we'll see that analysis wrapped too. Carmen and Shannon and Cameron, I'd like to get your opinions as well, please. Carmen, I'll go to you first. Is there something that is there a question that the survey could answer for you? Or is there one thing you would really like to know that you don't know the answer to today?
I don't know if I have a a a single question. You know, I I suppose I'd like to find out if. Our suppositions or assumptions. About why we have the kind of attendance that we do at town meeting are correct and. I and I suppose specifically, I I think that. Most people who don't attend don't attend, not because. They face some insurmountable obstacle to attending, but because they're by and large content with how things are. And they're content for other people to go to town meeting and make decisions. I know that's not true for everyone, but it would be wonderful to find out whether. By and large, people are content and. And really just not interested as opposed to being prevented from attending town meeting.
Good, thank you. Shannon, Cameron, okay to pass, but I'd like to get your feedback as well, please.
Like Carmen, I'm not sure there's necessarily a specific question, but I think that I'm. And I think this makes sense as a staffer that I'm more interested in. Thinking about some of the solutions that you all will be drawing from the survey results, like. I I've been with the town pretty much two years. One year we had town meeting on Sunday. One year we had the town meeting on Monday to Wednesday, I guess it was, so I just. Feel like I'm interested in thinking out. Some of the solutions and how we could get more people to come to town meeting.
Good, thank you. Thank you. Cameron, anything from you? Or I think you actually would lost Cameron, so that's that's a pass. Good, Eric Van Luna, see you as well, please.
Yeah, this is on a related question, but that you asked earlier. What would get people to answer the survey? I I got one, I got a survey in email today. To my surprise, I did. And and part of what led that was it's only gonna take two minutes.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think if. If 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 you don't give some kind of an indicator that this can be short and sweet. That's a deterrent to people even opening it.
Good. Good, thank you. Okay, so so thank you very much. I think that if we hold, we hold our comments in in mind, it will help us. Thinking about where we want to focus the survey further or not. I'm not gonna go through this stuff. We, you know, it's a lot of a lot of thinking about what 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 the instrument needs to be, how the instrument works. I think. You can read this stuff or hopefully you have read it. But the one point I want to make, though, is that, you know, there's the information that we need to help us make recommendations. And there's also information that helps the town understand itself better. And those two purposes hopefully don't compete. In terms of what we do with the survey, but I think part of part of the benefit of the survey is that, you know, we can tell the town, yeah. Seventy-five percent of you are content with not participating, or or that, you know, or that half of you. Or whatever, so. And then I, you know, I'm not gonna get into this. I mean, I, you know, I try, again, I tried to do some rigorous thinking about what I thought. The minimum elements of of what the survey needed to be were, and so that informed. The initial draft, and it's also informed how I've been looking at the subsequent drafts as well. And you know, there are kind of three pieces to the survey, right? Asking about problems, testing solutions, problems that you have with meeting. Or with with our our local government, testing solutions, you know. And I think, you know, when we think about trying to minimize the amount of stuff that's in the survey, it's maybe we don't ask about the. The really obviously, yeah, that would work, everybody wants that solutions, we ask about the things that involve real trade offs, and so. Clickers actually, I think, are a trade off problem, for example. And then finally, you know, because we're concerned to some degree about how different segments can can. You know, representation of of different segments and also how interventions might target some segments. I think we do ask a bit, and also we understand if the survey is biased or not. But there's also some stuff about understanding sort of what identity or what segment of the population you belong to. So it's hard to get away from those three kinds of questions, but but and and looking at the survey, we focus on the stuff that has the most information value. I believe for us. So these are the, this is the outline of questions from the latest draft. I can bring up the latest drafts, we can go through it question by question. Let me pause and ask, and Katie, feel free to step in, please, if there's information needs that you have as well.
Yeah, I I mean, I think from my perspective, I think getting a critical review to make sure like all these questions are necessary. As you know, we've heard from the comments that maybe we know some of the stuff. And also, I think where in-depth review is important is in those final like solutions. In discussing what actually appears in that section, because it should be something that we all would consider as something we would do. And make sure we're aligned on those before they're seen outside the committee.
Yeah, so looking ahead to the meeting on the tenth, I'll provide the copy for the the about and the pro and the con. As if they're ballot questions. I think that, so that'll be in the packet. Early next week, I think. But you know, I I think, you know, there are folks who have strong opinions about what 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 we should be considering. And I think as we look ahead to some sort of a public forum and giving those folks the opportunity to participate and to present their views. I want to. Fairly represent the pro and the con. In the survey relative to where they may be at, so it's all 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 a long way of saying. On the tenth as well, I want to be able to to show the pro and con and also make sure that we get that out to the folks who are likely stakeholders for for a public discussion. But I'm gonna go to Eric and Keith in just a second. Katie, do you think it would be a good idea to basically bring up the survey and go through question by question on the survey?
I do think that will take a long time, but I also would value getting people's opinions on it, so maybe. I don't know if folks want to weigh in what what approach they prefer to do, is whether looking at this is sufficient or question by question might be more useful.
Let me go to Eric and then to Keith. In the meantime, what I'll do is I'll bring the document up. And we can go through that as as much as we need to.
We've just been talking what.
Eric, please, yeah.
Yeah, we've just been talking about what might go in the survey or get people to answer it. Could this be an appropriate time to just ask whether any of the members of the public, non-members of the committee? But who've been listening to our conversation have any guidance or thoughts?
That's a good point. Let me take Keith's question and then I'll go to the public for any questions or comment as well. Thank you, Eric. Keith, please.
Thanks. First, I I think the questionnaire is extremely well done. I I followed the 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 flow. Very closely, I I thought that it was it was it was a it was a good approach. The one question I'd have, and it it it's that. There are many questions asking people about annual town meeting. There are a lot of questions where they're only asked about annual town meeting, and I think they the questions should strike the word annual. And ask them about town meeting, because we may have, you know, there are some people that may. Show up, there are special town meetings that are held, typically on. On single issues that are important to a lot of people who then fill the room. And I wouldn't want to disenfranchise those folks who only come to the special town meetings to. To vote on, you know, to vote on their favorite project. Thanks.
Thank you, Keith. Katie, just a second. Let me just invite the public on the the topic of, is there something from the survey? Or something, is there a question that you would like to have answered that perhaps we can address through the survey? David Allen, I will recognize you, member of the public.
Thanks, Eric. I actually don't have an observation on that. If you want to stay with that, let me come back after you've covered that.
Yeah, please come back. Let's let's stay in frame, please. I see no other comments from the public. Katie, please, I recognize you.
Yeah, and just to respond to Keith's comment, we did discuss a little bit at our at the. Subcommittee meeting about whether we wanted to include special town meeting or annual town meeting. Thinking that most of the work that we're doing here is in regards to annual town meeting. In terms of, you know, the the regular event that happens every year and the things associated with that, which may be different from the high interest articles. But I don't know that it's actually that important to be specific about it. So I would be fine to make that update if if others agree.
I'm I'm fine with it. Thank you, Katie. So David Allen, member of the public, contributed some revised copy for the introduction here. That was communicated to the committee as a whole. And I think overall, I think we're we're, I I think we're pretty amenable to that, but I think Katie, you'll you'll. You'll make the decision about how what the final wording will be on that, if that's okay with you.
Yep, I can take David's comments and some great suggestions and incorporate them into another version of it. So thanks to David for the comments.
Yeah, so. Rather than discussing every question. I'm gonna put the screen up, I'm gonna pause and see if there's anything we want to challenge, or Katie? If there's a question that you want to add, that if you want to, if there's something that you would like us to discuss, please, please, yeah, Parrishar, please.
I'm just curious, what? What what's our metric of success gonna be in the response rate that we get back?
Oh, golly, I mean, you know, the the. The survey from thirty years ago, it ended about fifteen hundred. And I I think that's a pretty big number for a town survey these days. I almost, you know, so, yeah. I don't know, actually, I I it's it's gonna be what it is, right? I I think, you know, is that to say that if there's some some threshold number, the the below which the survey is not credible? As an instrument, is that what you're saying or?
I guess I'm trying to understand, it's a good survey, lots of comprehensive questions. Have we gone through and tried to answer them as as if we would get them ourselves? Just curious, how long would it take somebody to do the survey and if folks are like me? After six or seven questions, my tolerance. Goes pretty low.
Right.
So I'm just kind of curious, if we get one hundred, are we gonna be disappointed? Like, what's our threshold roughly? For what we're expecting?
Right, so it's sort of, there's a question there about duration versus response rate, right? That almost sounds like a.
Oh, well, they're related, I think. That's my point.
Well, I bet they are, right? So that's something where maybe maybe someone who knows a little bit more market research type stuff. Might be able to give us some opinions that way. You know, I I don't know, Katie, and and from an epidemiological perspective, if you've got a, if you have a curve in mind.
Yeah, I mean, I think our response rate's not going to be good. But what good is, I think, is hard to define in this situation. I'm not like super familiar with this, at least type of survey area that I don't know. We had what, less than about, let's say, a hundred responses post-meeting? We still gleaned some information from that, but is that useful? No, I would love to see the response rate similar to what we had in ninety-six. I think.
Yeah.
Um, I also think we'd be successful if we get different strata of the population to respond. So we don't just have the people who are coming every night. Um, so I think success could be defined in a number of different ways, depending on who's responding, but, um. Yeah, I don't have a set number I was thinking about, but maybe you have something in mind, Parrishar?
Well, I mean, you know, I'm in the healthcare field and you send out surveys like this, you, you get some sense of. Uh, you can do an analysis. I'm not a biased statistician. And I'm not suggesting we do that to get a sense of, well, who are we sending it out to? Are we expecting? Six, seven thousand registered voters? Is that our target?
Our target's to get it to everybody in town as a voter.
Right, so six or seven thousand registered voters. I don't know the exact number.
The thirteen, thirteen thousand, actually.
Thirteen thousand, and so I would hope we get ten percent.
Yeah, yeah.
Thirteen hundred, maybe?
Yeah. Yeah, that would be great, right?
I think that would be, yeah, really, really good if we did that. And at a minimum, you know, we're trying to engage the public. Um, and, and, you know, offer them a chance to weigh in on this, right? So that people don't just say, well, we don't want town meeting or town meeting isn't representative. Like, this is your opportunity to help us improve it. So. I think it's, it's also a kind of that gesture of inviting comment to be part of the solution.
You know, I, I think Parrishar, it was a really interesting question. I, I think, you know, uh, when I think about next steps with the survey. Uh, um, it would be to, to put one or two versions up and Google forms and then find a way to sort of. You know, to, to test it with some people. Uh, um, I haven't really thought that through because what people are we testing it with? Is a, is a funny question, but, but I think, you know, the, the, we've, we've got a pretty good design, right? We're going to make some tweaks to that, uh, no doubt, but then it's, how do we go test it with some real people? Uh, and see, see what's going on with that. So I don't have an answer for that, but to me, that's the step after this one. Uh, and it might be that we do a three-question survey, right? You know, why, why do you show up or not? You know, would this help you show up? Thank you. You know, and, and it could be, that could be, it could be what it is, but I, I, I don't know.
So now, Shin, Shin, if I recall correctly, doesn't a town do a survey of some sort every two to three years? I'm just curious, maybe we just look back over the last couple of surveys and see what kind of response rate we got from the town?
Yeah, so I could follow up on that one. I know, I, I think the last one was done. It, it might have been twenty twenty. Um, and I'm, I think up until then it was done by annually, but things just. Have sort of fallen off track with it, to be honest, or I know, I think last year maybe there wasn't funding for it. Um, but I can see what the response rate was for the twenty twenty-one.
Derek, thank you. Thank you. Um, Katie, I want to come back to the survey questions. Uh, um, how should we drive this?
Yes, um, so. I, there are some tags in here. So the yellow highlighted items are just kind of my narrative about why we were asking the question, what we would do with it analytically. But there are some tags for discussion, um, within each of those. So I think those are worth talking about. Um, but also, you know, if there's any question that people think is not necessary, we can talk about that and strike it in this forum as well. Um, so maybe does it make sense to go through, look at those items for discussion and folks can, you know, review the questions along the way and. We can cut things if, if folks find it unnecessary.
Um, okay. Uh, so let's, uh, Kristen Hegerity, please.
Alice has her hand up too.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, um, uh, uh, well, I got you, Kristen, then we'll go to Alice, please.
Um, I, I have tried to strike every question on this except for three. And then Katie will give me like a good reason why to keep it on there. I'm like, oh. That is a good, that is a good thought. But, um, yeah, I would like it to be as bare-bones as possible. And so Katie, thank you for kind of. I think the yellow text is, is important there because it makes me think, oh, would we do something different? And, you know. So I'm curious to hear what other people say about striking things and making it more concise.
Uh, Alice Kaufman, please.
Um, I really appreciate the work that's gone into it, and I think we can scrape a bunch of questions. Not that we don't want to ask them, but in the essence of how people would be willing to, how many people would be willing to respond to them all. I'm looking on the page that you've got out, question three comes to mind. Because that's a very subjective question about what a newcomer is. You know, I will never be not a newcomer, even though I've been in town for forty years.
Yeah.
So that question is very difficult to get, I think, at what you're trying to get on that one, Katie.
Yeah, we originally, I originally put, have you lived in the town of Concord for less than ten years or ten years or more? Thinking that we might be able to look at folks who are newer to town and look at their sense of recommendations and how we. Get new people to go to town meeting and keep coming to town meeting. Um, but then we're, you know, ten years is also subjective. I was just thinking, I've lived in town for five years and I consider myself a newcomer, but you're right. Maybe I'll always consider myself a newcomer and, uh. And so maybe this is something that, um, we don't want to ask, but. Yeah, I know Eric had a lot of questions about like people's identity and how that played into their decisions. So I think this was kind of one thing to get at that identity piece a little bit. Um, but I think if there's a place to cut, this could be a place we cut.
Thanks. I have one other, uh, point that, um, I did recently get the full results from the CMLP study. And I just can't find them quick enough tonight to be able to tell you what that response rate was, but I think. Uh, it was a really high, don't you remember that, Katie? A particularly high response rate, and we were both like, wow, that's pretty good.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember off the top of my head.
Yeah, I'll find it again, but I can offer that later.
Cool. Um, uh, so a six, a suggestion to, to strike question three. I, you know, the question about identities, right? You know, the, the, are, are you a parent of a school-aged child? Are you a retiree? Do you, you know, do you consider yourself having grown up in Concord? You know, those, those sorts of things, I think, when we talk about representation or, you know. I think those kinds of identities are salient, but we don't know how to measure that, uh, as such. But we're challenged in measuring that in this survey. Uh, and I think, you know, the question of, you know, are there interventions that are associated with different town identities? Uh, I, I think is really kind of stretching it. So, so, uh, maybe it's best not to ask Q three at all. It's really counted in my curiosity, but, but, yeah. Um, so question four about caregiving responsibilities. Um, you know, this is here because, uh, well, it says what, what it's here. Uh, um, how, how do we feel about keeping this question?
I guess why not just ask it directly? Do you have, do you, do you have children? Uh, that are of this age or something?
Well, this is pretty direct that way. I, I mean.
It also gets at caregiving beyond a child, because there could be people with caregiving responsibilities for. Other folks, so that's why I tried to keep it a little bit more inclusive.
And so why the age breakouts, I guess?
So I thought there could be different interventions that we would target based on the age of the children. For example, the current situation is ages three and over, everybody goes to the gym and it goes past ten o'clock. Um, so it could be that we look at interventions by caregiving among different age groups to see what would allow different people to come to town meeting. Uh, but again. We, we can think more critically about whether we need this or not.
And so parents with a school-aged kid, uh, uh, is I think, you know, our belief is that, that. That's a group that, that we believe to be underrepresented in town meeting. Uh, by and large, and so I think that's, that's in part why we're paying attention to that question here. Um, and this comes from the, the overall idea of, of opportunity cost as well. What? What is it that you're dealing with in your life that keeps you from getting the meeting? Is there anything we can do to, to, to compensate for that? Uh, Eric Van Loon, please.
Yeah, I, I'd, uh, I'd be in favor of omitting this question. Um. First, because I think that the answer later on to, you know, what are the, what are the impediments? People are, are going to say, I've got kids at home or I've got elderly parents or, you know. Um, second, we want to keep this, uh, shorter. And third. Uh, I, I, I think it's not a stretch to say that very likely. The subgroups in each one of those ages are going to be so few people. That it'll be very hard to, to draw conclusions.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Eric. Uh, Kristen Hegerity, please.
Um, I have to take a ten-minute break and then I'll come back. But, um, I had, uh, just some kind of smaller, uh, text questions, so they can, they can, comments, and they can all wait until we figure out which, which. Which questions are going to stay, so I'll be right back.
Thank you. Okay, see you soon. Um, moving forward, um. Uh, how often, I think, you know, uh, um. Uh. Never sometimes and always, uh, I think, uh, that's the, the, kind of the qualitative granularity. Um, uh, you know, we could look at frequently or typically or whatever, but, but, uh, I think, uh, I'm fine with that. Question six, how do you budget your time? Uh, I think is, is, you know, um. Uh, question seven speaks to, um. Your attitudes about town meeting and, you know, this is sort of the money question here, right? You know, uh, um. Uh, and I think, you know, the only concern I have. Right? If this is a thing that, that we're really kind of very interested in understanding. You know, that, that, that one fact, so to speak. Um, do we make it a question by itself, so to speak? But I think, you know, looking at it. Looking, looking at where it lands, where it fits in the survey, looking at the overall complexity of this question. I feel like people are going to see it, will get responses on that. Is, is the question, is this, is this, is this assertion, uh, prom- prominent enough? Are we happy with the, with the question the way it is? I mean. Uh, yeah, Phil.
So, uh, I think this question is too complicated. Uh, we're already trying to cut things. Because we want people not to just not answer the survey. And, uh, even though I, I think the questions, and I think every single question is very well-written and thought through. This is just, this grid is too complicated. There's like six sub-questions. Um, it'll, it'll just, I think it'll discourage people from, from answering the question, but also maybe even answering the whole survey when they look at this.
Um, so the, the, the ask would be to redesign the set of questions into unique questions to drop some of the terms from it. Uh, or, or, but to look for a way to simplify this. Is that, that what you're?
Yeah, my suggestion is to turn to a yes or no question or take it out. Because it kind of goes, it overlaps with the previous question.
I see, um, if I can jump in here, I see questions like this on surveys all the time. So people will go through a set of items and be like. Kind of their rating of agreement, disagreement, kind of comparing all those different items that actually I think it will take less time for someone to fill out. Um, this number of items than doing a yes, no for all of them. Um, but I see your point that maybe it's, maybe we can pare down the options that occur here.
So I hear two.
I was suggesting one yes, no. Uh, are you satisfied to let others deliberate and decide most issues or not? Yes or no? Uh, but not to ask all these.
So we, we, we could pull that out as a separate question or also keep question seven. Right? We could, we could just make that a, a specific question, satisfied blah, 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 yes or no? And then we could also keep question seven. Um, so, so, you know, how do we decide this, right? Uh, I mean, you know, part of it is, is, is the judgment around what we think people are going to answer. Right? Uh, is the question too complicated? What's the risk of not getting the response and on a, on a key, on a key point of interest? Um, it almost sounds like a technical question, right? And in terms of the survey design. Um, maybe Katie, you think about it? Yeah.
I would suggest we test the question.
Yeah, oh, yeah, that, that's another one too. I, I mean. Uh, so perhaps if we do, you know, we do mock up the survey online, Google Forms or whatever. We can do a couple of different versions. Again, that comes back to how are we going to test it with people? But, but, but that's a great, it's a great, it's a great point, Alice.
And for me personally, I find the grid very easy to understand. So unlike, you know. A Phil comment, I find it easy to understand the grid rather than go question by question. And I like your suggestion about pulling out the question about satisfaction with town government, and that gets it what Carmen said as well. Are you content with our local form of government, our local town meeting form of government?
Right. Well, it's, uh, uh, similar but different, but yeah, uh, to your point, yeah. Yeah. Uh, Parrishar, please?
Yeah, I, I would probably get rid of the, I don't have enough information. I, I'm not sure. That, that's a vague question, I think, in my opinion. Uh, and I'm struggling to understand why we. Care that much about don't like attending versus not interested. I mean, the end result is there, they don't care enough. To attend, so maybe. Get rid of one or, one or both of those, I guess.
Uh, I'm not sure I agree with you, Parrishar. Um, I think, you know, um, I'm, I'm satisfied to let others decide is, is one thing. Um, my, that, you know, when I come to meeting, it sucks, right? My experience is bad. I think it's a different thing. Uh, and, you know, I don't go to meeting because it exhausts me, right? I mean, that, that's, that's different than, than I, I trust that the good people of Concord. Will do right by our schools or whatever.
Yeah, I, I think I'm, sorry, I didn't, I, maybe I shouldn't jump in, but maybe I'll.
That's okay, yeah. Ha, Katie.
If attending the meeting, what's our solution?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. I don't know that we would action on it, and I think it's vague enough that maybe we, we could leave in, I'm not. Interested. Kristen did have an edit for not having enough information to make that more specific, which was helpful, and I was thinking of incorporating. Incorporating into the next version, so that would get at like, oh, people don't know what's happening or like, there's, they weren't informed that. The meeting, so that would inform potentially like a recommendation that we have. Um, but I agree with the last, your suggestion, that maybe we keep it with, I'm not interested because that, that does incorporate people who don't like going there. By definition, not interested to go.
Good, thank you. Uh, question eight, how frequently do you attend? Uh, I think there's no argument about that. Um, there's some, uh, there's some overlap between Q seven and Q nine. Um. Well, these are about public hearings and committee meetings. So, so, you know, this is about specifically town meeting. This is about the other stuff. Um, and, uh, I think, I think it's useful to have the other stuff in this survey. Uh, um, it's all part of one big, big legislative process. Um, any countercomments to that?
I'm not, uh, I, yeah, I'm not sure that the general responder would know the difference between annual town meeting, town meetings and town committee meetings. To be able to make that distinction. We're not talking to those people who are totally familiar with our form of government and the ways to participate. I don't know that it adds significance.
Okay, okay. Uh, and you know, if we got, if we're getting, uh, uh, five percent of registered voters at town meeting. We're getting one percent at committee meetings. You know, I mean. Uh, generously. Um, so, so I, I hear you arguing, Alice, for, for perhaps dropping Q nine.
I think I would agree with that. Um, I don't know what we would do based on that information. Like, if most likely the people who are attending those committee meetings are people who are going to town meeting all the time. Um, so that would kind of be the same subset of like really involved people.
Yeah. Good, uh, good, thank you. Uh, Q ten and Q eleven, nice and simple. Um, um. Uh, uh, Q twelve gets to what's difficult about getting, what complicates getting to meeting. Uh, uh, this is something that we had in the town meeting survey that was actually, the responses were interesting as well. Um, and here we can sort of, you know, get at some of the identity questions as well. Um, like, we don't have, like, you know, I have to watch my kids. But there it is, I cannot afford dependent care provider services or, 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 you know, maybe we look at, at. Uh, caregiving responsibilities conflict, conflict with coming to town meeting is one of these options here. Uh, Parrishar, please?
Oh, backwards, I'm sorry, to question ten or eleven. So, do you want to be more involved? What is that going to gain us through an anonymous survey? Are we going to ask for people's names at the end?
This would allow us to, one, allow people to stop the survey if they're like, nah, I don't want to be more involved, so we can just end the survey. We have their response. It's a short questionnaire. They don't have to go on and tell us whether they'd attend town meeting. So this would allow the second set of the, um, questionnaire to appear for some of those folks, assuming our platform allows that. Um, so I think that's kind of the main purpose, and it would allow us to look at. kind of the main purpose. And it would allow us to look at for those people who do attend town meeting and want to be more involved, the different items that they think would be beneficial for attending town meetings. So this would allow us to stratify the recommendations. That was my thought.
So ten is for folks that want to, that already attend town meeting and want to be more involved?
So for people who, let's say, attend town meeting rarely, but they attend and they want to be more involved, we can look at how we can help those people be more involved. For people who never attend town meeting and don't want to be more involved, we can end their survey. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, the last one goes include that you're going to end the survey for those folks. Again, just trying to pressure test how much to the point I think Eric made earlier is are we, are we going to get enough sample sizes for subgroup analysis to get that granular? I just, I just don't know the answer.
Yeah, I guess I was hoping that by ending the survey, it means that we don't lose people, those less engaged people. We get actually a completed survey that's submitted to us versus someone abandoning their their phone and not finishing it because it doesn't apply to them.
I think that's right. So ten would, ten would just end the survey. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Say no, then you just end the survey. That I agree with. And then the eleven, do you want to be more informed about what's happening? I see. Yeah, okay.
Good, good, thank you. Interesting question. So Katie, I think, you know, asking about conflicting caregiving responsibilities might be something that that, oh, here it is. Dependent care, maybe we look at that more generally as caregiving as opposed to dependent care?
Yeah, I I I think I took these from some other questionnaire, but I'd be fine to kind of wordsmith it to make it a little bit more simple and get at those.
No, no, I I wrote this. You're really welcome to make it better. Please improve it. Yeah. Okay, and so now we come into the satisfaction of experience stuff. So how's your experience at meeting? The motions of presentations are good about the town, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, so that question gets at how satisfied people are about the amount of time spent. So that could inform where we end up cutting some of the elements to make the meeting shorter. And we had this discussion at our previous experiences town meeting and and David Allen made a great point. We had a question about valuing those specific pieces. And ultimately, like, those are the parts of town meeting. So we wouldn't, you know, do anything about dropping the elements, let's say. So we just kept it with the amount of time to help inform recommendations.
Good, good. I'm going to keep flowing through it unless I see a hand come up.
Oh, and maybe one more comment on that question is we did discuss reviewing the wording of those specific pieces. So it's very clear to people who are less informed about town meeting about what actually those items are. So they can make a more informed choice because I wasn't. Oh, some of them are clear.
So question fourteen, these are the interventions. We want to test the group under accessibility, which, you know, makes sense to me. I don't know when it goes out to the town, if it's going to be misconstrued. But making it easier to get to meeting is really what this category is about. And again, you know, there there are two things going on here, right? One is protesting to see whether or not there's support for a hypothesis. And the other thing is we're also signaling that we're thinking about some stuff. Right? So I think this one actually, I don't know what we can really do. You know, I was talking to Carmen about this. I mean, the the making meeting meetings shorter, there's a lot of juice being already squeezed out of that orange, so to speak. And so I'm not sure that that this is a really productive question for us. Kristen, please?
This would be a great place to kind of hear other folks' suggestions on improvements, just so that we are making sure we're capturing everything. And then the one, because this is where we're kind of testing some of our 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 solutions, potential solutions. And so some of the thoughts that I thought we could do is make it a little more explicit. So like, I think the second one could be like multiple sessions that end earlier each night, for example, Monday through Thursday, seven to nine. But then also, you know, put something that says like, holding two shorter town meetings, for example, one for, like, so I think we should definitely gauge with some specificity here and and examples so people can see. And, you know, I'd I'd be as specific as saying, like, instead of saying holding town meeting on the weekend, but holding it on a Sunday, right? Because we know we're not going to hold it on a Saturday. And and so I just wonder if we can, as a, as the group collectively, have we in this section, whether it's accessibility or continued, really collected everybody's thoughts on this in this section? So this is what I think is the most important part to get feedback about.
Phil? You're in mute, Phil, I'm sorry.
Yes, yes, sorry. So I think this is the most important question. And I think it just needs, it just needs to be simplified a little bit. Like, first of all, I agree, the the one that you've highlighted, Eric, probably could be removed because people won't know what that means, meeting, some meeting elements. But does, can we also simplify it by removing the right column, which is much more likely to attend? What's the difference between more likely to attend or much more likely to attend? I just think we want to make it as easy as possible for people to answer this question on each of these very important things we're considering. And, you know, why have them fret? Oh, does it make me more likely to attend or much more likely to attend? Do I feel strongly or medium? So just simplifying it.
So, okay, so I hear you on that. I want to go back to Kristen's suggestion, which I interpreted as the descriptions of of intervention should be pretty, should be pretty vivid. Right? Perhaps more of them, more specific options, so that there are more options to look at. And that they're 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 more vivid. So it's it's clear what they're about. Katie?
Yes, I I was going to say, I think one that we need to review each of these items, like very specifically with the whole committee to make sure that they make sense and they belong on here and are things that we might do. When I was, and maybe that's a topic for a meeting where we do go through item by item. I don't know if that's now or the next time and and hash it out and cut and revise or whatever. I can take a first, a second or a third attempt at doing that, but it doesn't include everyone's ideas yet. And second, I think we also talked about some things might be like common sense items that I didn't think were common sense because I didn't know, but but aligning with the the whole group on what those are would be useful. And then a final comment about the much more likely, I kind of pictured that we might get the data back and all of everyone would just be like more likely, more likely, more likely, more likely. So then we wouldn't be able to tell which items were like the highest impact because everyone would like generally what that is. So us being able to figure out which are the ones that are really favored versus like kind of favored. Actually, that could be like a huge issue in analysis if we get it back and everyone just likes generally everything. But I am open to suggestions on how maybe we can do that better, for sure.
Understand your thinking, Katie. I I I understand Phil's point as well. And I think you're going to get to decide. So I think, you know, the meeting on the tenth, there is a lot to talk about here. And so maybe we just devote real time on the meeting on the tenth to going through some potential solutions that we want to see appear in the survey. A little later in our meeting tonight, I'll talk a little bit, a little bit more about potential solutions. I think, you know, one big difference, Kristen, and what you proposed relative to what we have right now is is I think more robust is the wrong word, but a more explicit description of the intervention. So maybe I'll ask that you take some of these and flesh them out if to 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 capture your thinking about them? If that's okay?
Yep, I'll I'll do that.
Okay, cool.
And then if anyone has any other quick thoughts and they want to send them to me, please do. And then I'll at least sketch them up.
Okay.
Yeah, I was trying to be mindful of how it might look on a mobile device, assuming so that, well, I think that's going to be a big challenge. But I very much welcome your input and and feedback and thoughts on this. That'll be great.
Yeah. Good, thank you. So there is a lot here, I think. But we just pushed most of the discussion out. But that said, is there anything on on this question that we want to cover now? Or or we're going to just pick it up in the tenth? Perashar, please?
Yeah, so maybe there's, I don't know if now's the time to talk about this, but the electronic voting, remote voting, those two in particular, and I'm curious, would we not want to understand whether folks are more likely to attend? If those were options? Rather than pose them as a favor or not favor? Separate questions?
That's interesting. I I think it's a good point. I think my thinking had been, you know, sort of down the gutter, so that down the the path of like a bowling, down the path of a referendum style question. I think it's a good question as to, you know, would you be more likely to attend is perhaps more to the point. I think the counterargument is that these are things, these are fundamental changes that affect the whole meeting. And so we're asking for a judgment about, you know, your judgment about whether whether these are good for meeting or not. So they're really two, two different questions. So I don't have an answer for you, but I recognize your question. Katie, please?
Yeah, I was originally thinking of having these items that would require maybe not so much clickers, but the other items that would require some sort of legal change to be in a separate section so that we can add some sort of educational component that like this isn't easy. This requires like actual legal changes. So you won't see this soon. But we want to know what you think about it. So then people know, oh, that's why we don't have remote meeting. That makes sense. But clickers, Eric presented a good, really good point to me at our last meeting about how there really is some lack of information about like what it actually means. Like, I didn't realize that your vote could actually be potentially less private if there's like a record of how you're voting. And so there is some component of information that we might want to provide so people can make an informed choice about those items. But then again, that's more reading. So I think there's pros and cons to different approaches here. But that was the thinking that went into it.
Good, thank you, Katie. Talk about clickers. So this, this is an important question. You know, a part of the, part of the clicker's discussion is based on the idea of of, you know, being able to vote anonymously. And so the question about people's beliefs and the privacy that their vote should be private at meeting is an important one, I think. I think, you know, people will answer that here. But, you know, I, there's a question basically that maybe votes shouldn't be private at all at meeting. You shouldn't have that option. It's a legislature, not not an election. So I think, you know, I'm thinking about the format of, so the reason too for the pro and con is because these are complicated. And, you know, it seems like common sense. Yeah, sure, we should have remote voting, right? But but because there are, because you know, a major con is that you're not going to see it anytime soon. But as well that, you know, it changes the dynamic of meeting. And so part of the idea of the pro and con is to, in effect, try to educate the the people taking the the survey as to what the real, real dynamics might be about that. So that speak to your concern, Perashar?
Yeah, my concern is more on the, well, definitely on the voters. And I saw the previous question, I think, could be helpful.
Yeah.
And I agree with the education piece.
Yeah.
Not concerned about those other than the time, but yeah.
Yeah. Good. Kristen, please?
So regarding the privacy, I I think this is really important to capture. And is there a way that we can capture how important it is for you know, transparent voting? I don't, I don't know if that's the right way to say this, but you know, it's important for me to see that people see my vote or that I see other people's vote because if we just ask, it's important to vote in private, but not the contrary of that, then I don't know if we're painting a broad enough picture, but I don't know exactly where we would capture that.
Right, I don't know either.
It's kind of like, it's kind of like, what, what is good about town meeting? Well, it's great that I get to hear people talk. And I guess we kind of say that because we say declare my vote in that, in that earlier aspect.
Right.
But anyway, if some people can give that some thought, if if I'd I'd be interested in hearing how residents view that.
Good, thank you. I have a few more comments about the survey. I think we've gotten through it. And Katie, do you feel like you've gotten enough feedback for for a meaningful next rev?
Yeah, I definitely could. I I feel like I don't have a necessarily a ton of changes to make. So I wonder if I could also send it out when I have a revision and when folks have a little bit, maybe more time to think about it, you if is it possible with open meeting that people just send me feedback and I don't really respond to it necessarily? And then I can make additional edits as needed?
It's best that everyone just go through me, I think, just so that is eliminated, I would say. Or, you know, Katie, you can send me your next revision. I can send it out and ask people to redline it directly or send their comments back to me.
Okay.
Good, thank you, Shannon.
That'd be great. Thank you.
So so we've been going for a while. I I think, you know, I think the questions that I had, there's a bunch of stuff that I'd written about local government more general, more generally. And I think, you know, we dropped those in the early draft. And I think, you know, my top four in a way, right? Do you get town meeting? Do you understand what 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 the town meeting is a legislature? And what a legislature means? I don't know if there's room for that question in the survey or not, but it's a big issue. I think in terms of how we look at attitudes to town meeting. You know, we're all interested, or many of us are interested in the bottom, the the why question. How come you don't participate or why do you participate? I think a third sort of attitudes question is what is, what does good government look like to you? Are you, are you satisfied with our our local government? And then, you know, I think the fourth we've addressed in the survey already, where's the friction in your participation? So I think of these then, the thing, you know, the, there was one question, which is a long question that asked a lot of different things about aspects of town meeting and and our local government. And it was basically, hey, did you know this? Did you know that? Katie, do you think there's any room in the survey for that question?
Well, I guess maybe I'll just say, when I read the question, I was like, I didn't know that. I also didn't know that. I didn't know any of these things, maybe one or two. And so I think just assuming that most people don't know them, like, or maybe that just makes me feel better to assume that other people also didn't know the things I didn't know.
Two months ago, two months ago, I didn't know them either, right? So 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 maybe it's a pointless question that way. Nobody knows this stuff. But but and that was an effort, that question was an effort to be educational, quote unquote, so.
Yeah, and maybe it's just finding different venues for education, seeing that education is a gap and finding the best ways to educate in another form potentially. But
Right.
I loved learning all of the things that were in that question, Eric. So I appreciate that.
Yeah. So we kind of found a way to get that out there. But maybe not in this instrument. So next steps for the survey. This is what I had before the meeting. I'll get the 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 four pro con questions together and get those distributed. It sounds as though Kristen, additionally, Kristen Hagerty is going to do some some rewriting of some of the the solutions alternatives and pose those in terms of format for to consider. I am pretty curious about if if it makes sense to 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 do, you know, quickly, a couple of different versions of the survey to pilot. I have no idea how to pilot the survey. You know, I'd ask my my daughter and my spouse to look at a, look at a digital survey and go, hey, what do you think about this, right? I'd learn a lot from that. But but in a more rigorous way, I'm not sure what to suggest about that. But it seems like if we can experiment and learn something, we could, we we should, and it's timely to do that. I'm happy to talk with you further about that offline and see what we might be able to do if it if it makes sense.
So, oh, go ahead, Katie.
I was gonna say, I think it makes sense. Once we have like a version of the survey that like everybody pretty much agrees upon, or most people, that we put it into either Google Forms or Survey Monkey or something like that, that's available. And then we do, we, I think we need to pilot it and then see how the data reads out from the pilot to make sure we're getting what we need. And I think that probably is like asking people who aren't on this committee who are in our families or whatever, to fill it out and then get feedback on what that looks like and bring that together.
Yeah, good, thank you. We're going to go for about another fifteen minutes. Shannon, I think, you know, coming back to operationally, what what's it going to take to get the survey out on 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 the Town Survey Monkey? It's just the nuts and bolts questions that that we'd like to be able to answer that by the tenth?
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, cool, thank you.
One second, do we, do we have time on, is Donna? Um, one second, do we, do we have time on, uh, is Donna the one gonna be entering it in Survey Monkey?
I, I, I think I probably will, I, you know, I helped another committee with a survey, um, last fall, and, you know, it's a town account, so I was able to just get on and do it for them.
Okay, because that's great, uh, because one of the things I think we should do is like block off time in Shannon's calendar. Um, so say, we will have the survey to you by this date so that you know, because otherwise it's gonna get pushed off and pushed off, gonna be one of the lesser important things compared to anything else.
Yeah, no, that, that would be appreciated for sure.
So walking, walking the schedule back from a launch on the first of October, then in terms of lead time for lead time for getting the survey, yeah.
And one of the things we might consider for piloting, there's two things, one, you can do, I forget, it's called like an A and a B, right? So, like, let's say the survey is gonna go, uh, y- you could experiment with two different versions and with the, the town meeting and then the democracy and see if people look at it more than the other, but if you wanted a larger sample size than just friends and family, and, and friends and family might be fine, they just might find typos or something if we want that level. But we could conceivably give it to the board chairs, um, which is, you know, I don't know, twenty, twenty-five or so people. Um.
It's funny how many there are, right?
Yeah, it's, it's plenty, I'm picturing, I can't remember how many are in the room when they do that, you know, just kind of perhaps a willing au- audience, um, but I don't know if you wanted to keep it more private than that, but that was one of, and I don't really think we have to do an A and B, but, because we have time, but.
So I think it'll take some thinking, and, and I think we have some time to think about it, but I, 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 I think, uh, any kind of experiment, you know, we need to be a little bit intentional about it, so, um, uh, so, good. Um, uh, so something I've been working on, uh, uh, is an outline of solutions, and I've got a kind of a long document now that, that, um, has the structure to it with these different solution categories. Uh, and, uh, my intention is to, uh, sometime this week, get this document out to the committee. Uh, we can use this as an input to what, uh, we might change in terms of alternatives in the survey, though, uh, uh, so that, that's coming. Uh, the, uh, uh, and, you know, I've got some sort of top line stuff that I think if we had to do something right now, I would emphasize, and I think things that kind of, we might want to test in the survey include, you know, the weeknight timing, uh, potential weekend meetings scenarios. Um, uh, the wording of the survey is a little bit different, but I think explicit norms for debate, uh, I think is an important thing to ask about. Um, adopting clickers and or, or, or dropping private ballots, I think are two things we want to test. Um, uh, pre-submitting questions, uh, um, this is a suggestion, uh, from Carmen, who mentions the moderator in North Andover, uh, uh, basically doing live surveys of voters who are viewing town meeting online, uh, as a way of sort of gauging the, reading the room, reading the digital room, as it were, and I think we can talk more about that, but it's an interesting thing to explore in a survey. Uh, and a, a couple of other things. So I think, you know, the final set of things that are the solutions that we want to test through a survey. Uh, we've got a good initial set, uh, we might cut some things, we might add some things. But I agree that a real focus with the meeting and attempt should be to get through that and find, find exactly what it is we want to, we want to test. So again, the material that I just showed you in the last couple of minutes, um, I'll get out in a document sometime this week, along with another document around issues, uh, that we've talked about as a way of trying to organize everything. Um, uh, before we move ahead to, uh, the communication stuff, uh, um, uh, uh, Kristen Hagerty, please?
Related to the communications about the survey, um, do you think that on this meeting, we should try to pick a couple of dates for, uh, hearings or forums? Before, because that, that time's gonna get away from us quickly. If we're thinking we're gonna do it maybe in October, is that when we were aiming for?
Um. Yeah, uh.
Or do, do we need, are these gonna be in person, though?
You know, we should just talk about it, right? I think they should be in person. Uh, um.
Or hybrid, I guess, but at least a lot, like in person with them, because Shannon might have to find a location or something to give us some options.
There, uh, what I want to do, though, is get into the stuff that, uh, Alice prepared, uh, uh, a little while ago. Uh, so we can see that and discuss it, uh, while, especially while, while, um, she's in the call, and then we could talk about the nuts and bolts about a hearing, if that's okay. Um, so communicating about the survey, this is the preamble that Alice put together. Um, and I, I don't know, it looks like it might be a little bit long for an index card. Um, but, uh, this is the preamble that we, that, that Alice put together. Um, I think it, you know, has that sort of wide scope, begins with democracy, and, you know, like in a newspaper article, kind of funnels down to town meeting. Um, do we have any comments about this? Um.
I mean, my main thing is, it's gotta be about the voter and why this is important for them. Not just town meeting, but why is, why is the, the, um, filling out this survey, survey is important to them. So, you know, we have a little bit of it here. Um, you know, it's, it's free and open access to express, exercise your opinions and things like that. Um, you know, but filling out the short, short survey will help us have a better town meeting experience for all of us. I mean, like, just if there's other ways we can say, like, we've heard from you, you know, tell residents that you, you know, you're looking for, um, you know, input into making this process better, this is your chance type thing, so. By, by participating in this survey, you know, you, this is, this is the benefit.
Good, make it about you, it's great, yeah, thank you. Uh, Parrishar, please?
Yeah, I, I agree with, uh, Kristen sitting in. I wonder how many folks, when they start reading the words legislative body and budgets and all that, their eyes either glaze over or just be like, I don't want any part of this, so I would really recommend very quick and to the point, why, what we're doing and why, without the, you know, without the notion of history and all that stuff, basically. Just get to the point and then just ask the questions.
So, 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 um, can you, uh, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'm, uh, what does it sound like to you, right? I mean, so, so you're introducing the survey to me, you want to get to the point, but what are you saying? I mean.
Uh, I would simply say, I would simply say, um, uh, group of fellow recipients, help make it more accessible and understand. Any of town meetings, or town meeting is a place where we make our budget decisions and other decisions around planning, et cetera. We'd love you to fill out the survey and boom, that's it.
Uh-huh.
There's, there's notion of exercises and opinions, rights and desires, participate, all that is good laudatory language.
Right.
I think a lot of people, their eyes will just laser, just get to the point and just go straight to the survey, we can use that language in public forums and stuff, but here we're just trying to accomplish something.
So this, okay, thank you. So, so in a way, right, town meeting is the room, and Concord Town Meeting is the room where it happens. Right? Do you want to be in that room or not?
How about that as a preamble?
Yeah, we put it to music, right?
A little soundbite.
I'd love it, I'd love it, good, thank you. Um, uh, so then Alice prepared, uh, uh, four different, um, uh, uh, you know, sort of asks or preambles for four different audiences, and I think the setting is, for example, imagine, you know, that, that one of us goes to a PTG meeting, right, and we said, hey, there's a survey, um, or that, you know, one of us goes to the COA, one of us goes to, uh, 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 you know, uh, uh, the, the league, right? Um, so, so these are broken out, you know, in terms of age group, but, but the idea again is you know, tailoring an ask to your audience, and so these are different, different approaches. Um, any feedback on this, please? Uh, Katie, please?
Um, first, want to say thanks to Alice for putting these together. I think this probably gets to maybe what Parrishar was saying, like the short and sweet. I personally, although I'm outside of elevator speech one age grouping, I love the short and sweet, we get it, life is busy, let's, let's make this easier for everybody, here's a survey. Um, so that resonated well with me.
Good, thank you. Um. Uh, more comments? Uh, Keith Bergman, please?
Yeah, and, and for my group number four, uh, you know, life is short. Uh, so let's get to the point, and so I, I, I like the, or the, uh, younger age group message.
Good. Yeah, thank you. Um. Any other comments? Um, Alice, uh, uh, um, i- is there anything that you want to ask, uh, or look for any amplification?
Uh, no, I get the idea. I can refine any or all of these. I think, I think that Phil had a pretty good preamble. Uh, I think this is his comments in the meeting notes that I read. And I thought that was a pretty good succinct description. I tried to get at the question of, without asking people, what do or don't you know? Just give them the basic facts, so we're not embarrassing them about what they don't know, just tell them what we think is important to know about government. Um, but maybe that takes too many words to do. Happy to take it out. I can revise and send another copy if you want for next.
Great, thank you, thank you. Um, moving forward, uh, uh, so, so, okay, so, the, in terms of the, the timing stuff for the, the communications, right? Uh, we'll need to figure out, I think maybe I'd like to, to settle this on the tenth, but I want to raise it, because I think, um, um, uh, uh, we need to get, we need to make decisions about it. Um, you know, what's the timeline for our letters? Uh, I need to, Alice, um, if you can suggest who I should contact at the bridge for, for, uh, approaching them with, hey, we're gonna be doing this thing. Uh, uh, how, how can I, you know, communicate through the bridge about it? Um, if you could just give me a name, then, then, um.
Celeste at the Concord Bridge, uh, so.
Oh, Celeste, okay.
At conquerbridge.org.
I'll go right back to her, that's fine, yeah.
And the idea of, if you are thinking a campaign of letters to the editor, um, those don't go through Celeste, they go to letters@conquerbridge.org.
Good.
And there, one of the editors will pick them up, get them in format and put them in.
Yeah. Um. Good, thank you. Um, so, so, um, you know, who's gonna write what when? I, I'm guessing that I, I need to, I need to understand a little bit better about what the, what the bridge is, is willing to do. Uh, and that will inform our, our course of action there. Um, but, you know, there's also things like, you know, if you want a letter to go out and show up in the Friday edition, it needs to show up, you know, it needs to get in there a week ahead or whatever. Um, uh, you know, uh, Alice had talked a bit earlier about, you know, different groups that we want to target. Uh, and as well, I think what events we want to try to have a presence at, um, we need to get back to being concrete about that. Um, uh, Carmen had the suggestion that maybe, you know, each of us, um, can host a coffee or a focus group of our own, you know, to, to get some neighbors in to talk about town meeting, uh, and to maybe promote the survey that way as well. Um, that's a really interesting thought, uh, we don't need to coordinate to do that, uh, but, um, I think that kind of effort would be interesting. Uh, and I think, you know, again, you know, there's logistics involved here, right? So working backward from a mailing that arrives ten one, what's the schedule for the printer, right? When do we need to actually get cards out and so on? And so, um, uh, Shannon, actually, if this is something, I, I think you get a quote from the printer. Um, if you can give it, give us some information about deadlines, uh, uh, that would be good, too, and, you know, again, maybe by the time we get to the tenth, we can have a hard calendar, uh, for what needs to get happen when.
Yeah.
Uh, that's okay, good, thank you. Uh, Katie, please?
Um, just a comment about, um, the letters in the bridge. Um, I think it makes sense if we, like, divvy up, maybe not today, but maybe at the next meeting, which dates each of us targets, because
Exactly.
I think if, yeah, if we have too many in the same issue, me, nobody's gonna read them, at least that's how I was around, uh, election time.
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, but I think that will be useful, because I know I read those, and I know my neighbors do as well.
Yeah, good, exactly, good, thank you. Uh, Parrishar, please?
Eric, uh, two suggestions, one is, uh, even though we don't have exact times, I think it might be helpful for you to give a heads up at the next chair's breakfast.
Yeah.
That, that's one thing, and then I think maybe having a direct conversation email in person with the school committee chairs to get the contacts of the PTAs at the different schools.
Yeah.
Reach out to them and let them know, we're getting a heads up. And we really want their help in getting the survey filled out by them, by the parents. I, I think that would go a long way getting participation by that age group.
Yep, Kristen actually provided me with all the contact information for the folks at each of the schools. Um, so I have that, and I can reach out to them. I was waiting until we had kind of more of a pitch, but I can reach out to them and let them know it's coming and gauge their um, ability to collaborate with us on it.
Yeah, that would be, yeah, just, the more touch points, so better, I think.
Yeah, Katie, if, if you, um, uh, uh, or others on the committee are interested in, in leading a focus group as part of a PTG meeting, you know, it takes fifteen minutes in a meeting, um, that's a good opportunity for us, and, uh, I think if, uh, um, there, a- as you communicate that we know with the different PTGs, if there's interest there, well, we should find a way to support that. Uh. Um, let me think for just a moment, so, uh, so, so we've gotten through the communication stuff, uh, I know this is meeting, meetings running a bit long, we'll wrap up. Um, but a, a few things, Parrishar, I wanted to check in with you on the Pure Towns research. Uh, anything new there?
Uh, yes, I was a little delayed, but all of the surveys are out. We've gotten two surveys completed and three or four folks have said we've got it, so I'm gonna be hitting them up again, uh, probably beginning of next week, reminding them about the survey.
Yeah.
Basically, it was, uh, the not eleven questions or nine questions that we had in the slides from.
Yeah.
So it's good news, I think.
Okay.
But it's interesting, I will give a heads, I will give a shout out to the folks that manage our town website.
Yeah, yeah.
Be surprised at the disorganization of just trying to get the moderator's name and contact info for many of those towns.
Yeah.
Information about town meeting was all over the place on many of these towns' websites. I won't name them here, but I've got a list like that.
Good, good, thank you. So, and a couple of weeks, we'll get another update then, for sure.
Well, I'm hoping I've asked for responses by the end of, by the week of, uh, Labor Day, so.
Yeah.
Actually, the thirteenth, but if we get them sooner, we'll, we'll do the analysis and share with the committee.
Yeah. Um, um, do we have appetite for, uh, 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 passing some, uh, approving some minutes? It'll take, it'll be quick, and we've got a quorum. Um, uh, we have minutes from, uh, this email, this email went out. Get minutes prepared by Katie Breznik from the eight twenty meeting, uh, the drafted minutes came out, uh, via an email, I think yesterday. Um, uh, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes from eight twenty.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the, uh, what, what date was on, Eric?
Uh, uh, August twentieth nineteen twenty.
August twentieth twenty twenty-four, meeting of the, uh, committee.
Uh, second, please?
Second.
Uh, any discussion on those minutes? Um, okay, I'll take a vote. Um, I'll go through, uh, uh, boy, I don't have to order, actually I have it right here. Uh, so, uh, unfortunately, it needs to be a voice vote, so, uh, Keith Bergman, uh, minutes approval, please?
Hi.
Uh, Katie Breznik?
Hi.
Kristen Hagerty?
Hi.
Alice Kaufman?
Hi.
Thank you. Um, Eric Moore, aye. Parrishar Patel?
Aye.
Uh, Phil Swain? Uh, I think that was an aye, Phil. Uh, Eric, Eric, Eric Van Loon?
Aye.
So approved unanimously, the minutes from, uh, August twentieth, uh, nineteen twenty-four. Uh, the minutes from, uh, July sixteenth, prepared by Eric Moore, um, were in the previous meeting's packet. Um, I think, uh, uh, because they were not recently available, I don't, I don't know that it's correct to attempt to approve them. Um, so I think we'll defer that and pick it up again, uh, with our next meeting on the tenth. Um. Uh, any comments or questions from the public or from the committee, uh, before, before we conclude the meeting? Uh, David Allen, please?
Thanks, Eric. Um. I'm struck, uh, of course, uh, this meeting, but in a course of meetings, the focus has been on getting information from the public. Uh, of course, that's really a two-way door.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, when the door swings the other way, the committee puts information out to the public, or could, anyway. Um. I, it's the very end here, the discussion's been about, uh, putting information out, but about the survey, not about other potential topics. Now, we've been talking about getting a survey, how can it be relevant about getting information back? Or rather, putting information out. Well, let's go back in the conversation a couple of times, the question has arisen. Uh, should this be couched as town meeting or democracy? Uh, if the committee took a proactive stance on this issue on this issue of democracy, instead of assuming that people simply get turned off by finding, oh, my God, that's just like, I don't have anything to do with that. Committee played a role to, uh, approach this uh, as democracy rather than town meetings. Right? And proactively, to be simple, but it did some education. We should have to think about exactly how you go about doing that with each bridge and what were the various methods you might use. Uh, you could, in addition to perhaps getting more people responding to the survey because they're discriminating, oh, my goodness, this is about uh, my tax rates and this is about whether or not I can use a gas bill or whether or not I gotta get a dog license.
Sure.
Whether I can build my house over here or can I, I mean, limited to expanding in this fashion or another.
So, so fair, fair point, David. I think, you know, what I interpret you to say is is that we have an opportunity in the near term to communicate and educate the town about the relevance, the day-to-day about me relevance of what town meeting does. Uh, and I I recognize that point. Uh, it's a good point. And I think as well that in the arc of what we're doing with the committee, that we're really trying to get in inbound information. Uh, uh, I think, you know, in the coming quarter, um, I do expect us to be engaging a lot more. But I also think that by the time we get to the turn of the year, we're gonna be doing a lot more outbound and educational type stuff. And that'll be the real focus, the committee then.
And I think it's right, that the committee has to have done its work to get there. At the same time, uh, it's also come up in the discussion here.
Yeah.
Uh, there are some items, pregnant, if you please, where it makes a difference whether or not you get proactive information out now.
Understood.
I won't go into them in the moment, but uh, it's frankly very clear. Uh, the committee hasn't taken this up. That's why I'm making the point. I'm struck, it's about information in instead of seeing a role for getting out. But some of the items uh, of concern here. Uh, and this democracy matter is nicely illustrative of it. Uh, yes, people would say, oh, that's town meeting legislature, one thing to do. Wait a minute, it's not democracy, this is about uh, you know, what I can do with my home and the sales price. And that's where I go, whoops, wait a minute.
Thank you. Thank you, David.
Then by golly, oh, maybe I do want to take that survey.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, and with that, uh, I will conclude our meeting at eight fifty-three PM on the twenty-seventh. Um, thank you, everyone, for your your attention.